We do not have a problem here that we cannot work out. But it needs to be addressed and it needs to be worked out. Just so. We're trying to get it all together. And it ain't gonna make any sense to you until I say what I wanna say. I'm missing my copy of the Constitution. I knew somewhere along the line I was gonna miss something. Well, I'm missing my copy. I've had a hectic few days trying to get everything done and get here with the new job I'm having. I haven't gone to any one part taking passes over there. So I'm missing, I'm out the window, I guess. I said, "Look at this, you don't need it?" Rick, what if I get it from the... Just fully. The good thing about America... No, that's one Constitution, the federal Constitution. The United States Constitution. Well, I guess I've misplaced. All right.
This is Mr. Z.
That's one problem, I guess. The federal Constitution. The United States Constitution. You have two constitutions before you. One of them is the state constitution, one of them is the federal constitution. The federal constitution was written in seventeen seventy-six.
Is it in this packet that you give us?
Should be.
I heard that one said, "My copy."
That's it. That's one I got, that should be mine. My wife, I don't know what I'd do without my wife, she'd just find it for me. You can give it back to her. You can give it back to her, I got mine now. I've had a time, fellas, it's been...
I see what I did to mine.
I've never claimed to be polished, like I told you last time I was here. I staggered through this like a drunk man. I've got myself an education in dealing with this. I've probably made some mistakes, and before I'm done, I'll probably make some more. But that's just the way we are, we have to learn. Now, if you'll take the address I got, we'll start with it. It says, "Address of Sota County Commissioner, on January twenty-seventh, two thousand and nine." I wear mine on January twenty-seventh. But we are in two thousand and nine, we all know what happened back then, so we don't have to go over that again. And again, I'm not here to get in your face and make you angry. I'm here to try to work out a solution to a problem we've got. And we've got a problem. And it's not gonna go away if we don't deal with it, that's simple. So let's deal with it, and I've got some solutions I'll present to you here shortly. If you'll look at it here, and start at first, it says, "It's no secret..." I need my... I'm about organized as a one-legged man, I guess. All right, going back to the address of the county commissioner. It's no secret what we've been doing for the past four months. I have in my hand, twenty-six hundred... There they are. Twenty-six hundred signed petitions. These are petitions that we have circulated, that the residents of the Sota County have signed. You've all read the petition. I don't need to stand here and read it to you again, but that's what it's about. We have twenty-six hundred of them. I speak for twenty-six hundred people here tonight, not just one man. I've got twenty-six hundred people that agree with me on this. These people will be voting in future elections. These people live in the Sota County. They'll be voting. It depends on your decisions as to who they vote for.
That's right.
Every one of them know I'm standing here tonight, they're looking for you to make the right decision. The only reason I do not have any more petitions is because I haven't had time to get to it. Ever where I've gone, people have signed this petition. I've been in rich houses where they've signed it, I've been in what you call slums where they've signed it, and everything in between. Blacks, white, Mexicans, everyone has signed this petition. Everyone just about is upset about what's happening here. As I told you before, I have about one in fifty turn me down. That means forty-nine out of fifty people that I have protested this petition to agrees with me. Fellas, this is not gonna go away. This is not gonna go away. We're gonna deal with it.
Mr. Chairman, could I interrupt a moment for a question? I guess I'm a little confused here. I know that Mr. Braxton, Rayburn, has come up and was gonna do the presentation, and we listened to it, but I was thinking in the meeting that we determined we were gonna have a workshop and talk about code enforcement, so I didn't know that we was gonna go through all this.
Well, I think that we've agreed to have a workshop and have it at six thirty, but Mr. Braxton wanted to speak to us, and I guess this is part of it.
Are we gonna allow everybody else to speak tonight, this much time? Do we all have to go on now, because that's gonna take a long time? I'm really interested in working with these codes and try to do it, but you're going through a lot of stuff that I'm just not sure that we need to listen to in order to deal with the code that's here.
Well, it's my half hour, you give me a half hour.
Right on, right on, right on.
The board agreed to a half hour.
Didn't you tell me I had a half hour?
I don't remember, but I don't... I guess it's consensus of the board, is the board wants to listen to.
Well, I agree with Commissioner Hill, we have a five-minute rule. If you wanna give him other people's five minutes, that's your call, Mr. Chairman, but I don't agree with giving anybody thirty minutes. I mean, we need to have a workshop, a workshop is citizen involvement, but it's us brainstorming with our staff.
I told you standing here that I needed a half hour, and helping you knowledge your head okay.
Well, Mr. Rayburn, first of all, don't try to threaten me with reelection, okay? And this is the second time you've done that to me. I don't need to hear all that.
Did I threaten you?
Yeah, you just said, you know, depending on how we vote is gonna be depending on...
That's right, that's right, that's right.
This is politics. If you consider that a threat, then you need to get used to that.
That's right.
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
People around here, fellas, you can't...
Hold on just a minute. Mr. Braxton, if you would read what you've got here for us, read it. And we don't... In other words, don't add anything to it, read what you've got. Let's get on through what you've got written here, and then we'll go on into our public meeting and go ahead and get with your constitution and stuff, and we'll allow you that amount of time to read what you've got written here for us, if that's fine with you.
Well, I need you to add something to it, this will just keep my mind... And sway you.
Okay. Well, let's stick to the facts that you've got on paper, and you've done some homework here on your constitution and the United States Constitution, and go ahead and read us what you've got summarized here on your paper.
All right, let's jump to the Constitution here for just a minute. Since I've come up... How do I do it here? I'm sitting here, it appears that you're trying to rush me through this. Look at Constitution, Amendment One. This is the federal constitution that was written in seventeen seventy-six. Amendment One, should be highlighted in yellow. "Congress shall make no law representing or establishing a religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or providing the freedom of speech..." "Providing the freedom of speech," that's what I'm trying to do here. "...or the press," that's what this lady does. "...are invited to people to peaceably assemble and to petition the government for redress agreements." This Constitution gives me the right to stand here tonight. That's why we call this a petition. This is straight out of the Constitution. Now, you are our elected official. You work for us.
Right on.
We don't work for you, you work for us. And because you're our employee, we pay the bills, you're obligated to listen to us when we get upset.
Right on.
Now, if you take that as a threat, that we're gonna get rid of you that won't listen and get somebody that will listen, you take it that way.
Right on.
I have no desire to get any one of you off that board. But I do have a desire to get America free again. And right now, the way this is going, we're not free. When you can tell me what I can and cannot do on my property, as long as I'm not hurting anybody, I cease to be free. Where does that stop? Where does that stop? I drive a ninety-five Ford Ranger. Can I expect you in three years to come up and tell me that I can't have a ninety-five Ford Ranger in my parking lot? Where does it stop? If you think that's too far-fetched, there was a man in Charlotte County told that he couldn't have a seventy-two Chevrolet sitting in his parking lot, it's too old. Now, I'm doing exactly what this Constitution tells me I have the right and the freedom to do. Now, if it takes a half hour, it just takes it. You people get paid by us, and if I got the salary correct... Now, Ron told me, he don't make that, but the number they give me upstairs when I went to find out how much y'all made, the number they give me was thirty-three thousand, six hundred and forty dollars a year. Now, if that number's not correct, then it's your people's fault, but that's what they told me. If I pay you thirty-three thousand, six hundred and forty dollars a year at my tax money, I expect you to listen to me when I talk.
That's right, that's right.
Now, we're not here to get in an argument, but I'm passionate about what I believe in. And the voters of the Sota County will be making the decision every time you run for reelection. Now, they're upset about this. They're upset about it. Now, let's deal with it, let's don't get in an argument, let's don't have any hard feelings. Let's get this out of them and deal with it.
Mr. Rayburn, you're sitting there raving, or at least standing there raving about something that really ain't your issue. We're talking about code enforcement, and you're sitting here talking about us being reelected.
That's part of it.
Now, you say you don't wanna argue, you don't wanna offend, but you're sitting there being offensive by discussing what's not even the issue here tonight.
No, sir, I'm just...
That's part of it.
I will get on with it.
Well, but why don't you get on with it, then, and let's get away from all this other stuff?
As soon as I'm sure I got time to speak on it, I'll get on with it, ain't no problem here.
Boy, you wasted a third minute before I...
Y'all people don't talk, that's what's trying to stop me. That's what come across, Father. I'm trying to tell you, these people are looking at this, and they'll be voting in future elections. That's politics.
Mr. Rayburn, since we're in a discussion, let me just remind you, you've got twenty-six hundred petitions, but there's thirty-two thousand, four hundred other people out there that's not signed petitions, and they're the silent majority, and they have rights too.
No, no, no.
Do you understand that they both have rights also?
We're gonna get to it, we're gonna get to it. Like I said, I don't have any more of this, because I ain't had time to get to it. And I fully intend to do just exactly that. Before I'm done, I'm gonna knock on every door in this county, and I'm gonna find out who's for it and who's against it. And right now, we're running about forty-nine and fifty-four. I'm trying to stay calm. I'm doing the best I can at it. But you're not gonna block me on this, we've put too much work in it, and we're gonna speak our piece here. Now, let's get back to the problem. The only reason I do not have any more petitions is because I haven't had time to get to it. Most people have signed this because they feel our freedoms are slipping away. And our organization is the only one that's trying to stop that. You go talk to them. By the way, you ought to spend some time talking to the people of Sota County.
Right on.
You're the representative of each district, you ought to spend at least two, two and a half hours a week knocking on doors in your district, talking to people. You'll find out exactly what they think. Now, if you're too busy for that, then you're too busy. They're looking for me to stop it before it's too late. Now, we feel our freedoms are slipping away. If you'd have tried this a hundred years ago, you would have been bought it for treason. Now, that's a fact. It's been going on for a hundred years, and it's getting worse. And if we don't get a handle on it, if we don't get it stopped, where does it stop? Where does it stop? Look at the second paragraph. "And meeting with people over the last few months, I've enjoyed it greatly. These people have invited me into their homes and treated me like family." You know what they do, you know how they've done that? They have... I've looked at so many grandchildren and stuff the last couple of months, but the reason for that is because, and I've had them pat me on the back and thank me for what I'm doing. These people are upset, they feel their freedoms are moving, they're losing them. And they feel if we don't get it stopped, one day we're gonna wake up and no freedom is lost. These people have invited me to their homes, treated me like family. I've had so much encouragement, it's hard to express the feeling of accomplishment I've had. I have had so much, so many people encouraging me to do this, because they know the pressure's gonna come on. And I accepted that five months ago when I started this. I don't, I'm not trying to win a popularity contest, and I'm not trying to win a seat on that board. As long as Buddy Manfield does what he does and does right, he's got the job. But the minute he quits, you can look my name in the wall. As long as Buddy do it right, he's got the job. I have no desire to sit on that board. I've talked to people in New York, North Carolina, Tennessee, and Alabama, and many surrounding counties encouraging me, telling me it's about time somebody does this. We have raised almost three thousand dollars to do this at a time when most people are struggling to keep... ...me on the table. These people have given money to this cause that they don't need to give, and they've done it for this reason. The reason that people have given this is they fear if they don't get a handle on this, we're gonna lose all our freedoms. Now, folks, that's where it's going. That's where it's going. If you would read this Constitution, and because you're a public official, you ought to read this Constitution about every three months.
That's right.
You ought to take the time to read it. The tone of this Constitution, from the folks who formed it, is from the beginning to the end, is to control government, to keep government from getting out of hand. That's the whole tone of it. I've had this force thrown against my will. I don't wanna do this, I never wanted to do it. But my conscience will not let me sleep at night if I don't do something. I'm doing this against my will, I'm too old for this. I got two full-time jobs I don't need to call. But I will do it. And I'll do it to the best of my ability. We feel this is un-American, it goes against everything America stands for. Again, you refer to that Constitution, it says, "The freedom and liberty for all." For all, not just the poor, not just the rich, but for all. These codes are attacking us and our freedom. That's what they're doing. If you could tell us what we can and cannot do on our land, land we have struggled to pay for, we're not free. We have become subjects and not citizens. When the government can tell you what you can and cannot do, they control you. Now, if you're gonna do this, if you're gonna continue on it, let's take that flag down. Now, that flag stands for freedom. This goes against freedom. Let's pull up a red one with a hammer and sicker, but that's where it's headed. Fellas, this is communism. When the government can control you, this is communism. That's what people are upset about. Most people aren't agreeing with what I just said. I have one in fifty who think you're right, that means forty-nine out of fifty agree with me. We do therefore submit these petitions to you and hope that you will get some backbone and make the necessary change to protect us from future government intrusion into our lives. You're gonna have to reach down inside yourself and say, "This is right, let's change it." That's backbone. This country is in dire need of its leadership, have some backbone. They will not stand for what's right, and the first you get to them, they start compromising and backpedaling and trying to get out of it. You're gonna need some backbone. You're gonna need some strength. Now, that's what I wanted to say up to here. There's several things I would like to bring your attention. Number one, George Hernandez. George is sitting here. Now, you listen to me, I have nothing against this man. I hold no animosity toward him. If George Hernandez was not doing his job, somebody else would be doing it. I don't have any animosity toward the code enforcement officer. They're just doing what you tell them to do. A person like George or the code enforcement officers that will not earn their money is not worth shooting. They're doing exactly what y'all tell them to do. They're doing their job. I have no respect for a person, a man or woman, that will not do their job. They're just doing their job. But I do have an issue with George. He and his wife both work for the Sota County. Between them, they're making about eighty thousand a year, somewhere in that ballpark. And they're taking every dime out of the hardy town. This should not be allowed for him or anyone else who draws a salary from the Sota County. From the dog catcher to the county commissioner, you ought to live in the Sota County if you're gonna get a salary from the Sota County. I don't have anything against George. My dealings with George have been very, very close, he's not got either way with me. I have no animosity toward him, but if it wasn't him, it'd be somebody else. Now, I've gotta have a little bit of hell in myself, because a while ago, confrontation was coming up with. Look at number two, Constitution. I've already dealt with the petition for grievances. There's twenty-six hundred of them sitting up there. And I'm not gonna quit till I knock on every door in this county. I'll knock on every door in this county. It's gonna take me a little while, but I'll do it. And from time to time, I'll be coming in here letting you know where we're at. And we're gonna find out. You said there's thirty-two hundred that are against me, we'll find out. We'll find out. Look at Amendment Four of the Constitution. Federal Constitution. It says, "The right of the people to be secure in their possession and persons and papers and effects against unreasonable searches and seizures." Notice the word "seizures." "Shall not be violated, nor warrants shall be issued but upon probable cause supported by oath or affirmations particularly describing the place to be searched and the person or things to be seized." That simply says, "You can't take stuff that's wrong to us." Now, look back at the very beginning of this, what we call the preamble. "We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote for the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty. To ourselves and our prosperity, do ordain and establish this Constitution for the United States of America." The government's job is outlined right there. "To form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, and promote the general welfare and secure the blessings of liberty." The blessings of liberty means freedom. Freedom to do what you wanna do on your property, as long as you're not hurting anybody. It's different when you go to hurting somebody. Obviously. But when you're not hurting anybody, this Constitution says that the government's job is to secure those liberties, not take 'em away. Now, that's the Constitution, I didn't make that up. You really ought to read the whole thing, it's an amazing document. From cover to cover on there, you can see how they're trying to protect the government from getting into people's lives. Now, look at page two. I've been fighting with code enforcement since two thousand and one. Two thousand and one, they come out and said they cannot park my truck on my land. The fine of two hundred and fifty dollars a day has been raised to five hundred dollars a day. They put a lien on my property with a foreclosure on the lien. That's what they said they'd do in two thousand and one. They said they would take my land. That brings me to the state constitution. You got a copy of here? Page seven of the state constitution. Now, the federal constitution says you can't take it. This is state constitution. Page seven, paragraph three, the last four or five sentences in there, and this is what it says. "After three months, when the fine on such lien which remains unpaid, the enforcement board may authorize a local governing body, attorney, to foreclose on the lien or to sue to recover monetary judgment for the amount of the lien plus accrued interest." No lien created... The provisions of this part may be foreclosed on real property, which is a homestead. That tells you that you cannot take a man's homestead. That's the state constitution says that. The federal constitution says it, and the state constitution says it. That means you cannot take my property. You cannot take it. Mine is a homestead. That's why I didn't do any more in two thousand and one when I come before you. If you remember, Jerry, I told you if there was law in the books that you could take my property, I was changing. You told me to take the procedure, and I needed to contact the representative from this district, which is what I did. He sent me this Constitution. I read it. I found this clause that says you cannot foreclose on homestead property. That means somebody in Tallahassee realized the potential for it was there, and they knew they needed to protect it. Now, you have threatened to do that to them. You threatened to do that. That's why I call this organization Not in America. This is not supposed to happen in America, folks. This is not supposed to happen in America. What we're doing here tonight should not be a problem in America. America is, is ever principle on it, freedom. Ever principle. And you start telling people what you can and cannot do, threatening to take their land from them, you're gonna get people upset. You're gonna get 'em upset. You're not gonna get by that. You can't do that. Now, let's get together and work this problem out. Let's don't have any arguments, so have an argument. Let's pull together, we'll just straighten it out, ain't no problem. I got some solutions here shortly. Now, I've gotten a little ahead of myself. Look where it's seen. This is an attack on freedom. Freedom that was fought with the blood of our young men. For three hundred years this country's been in business, our young men have went off and fought on foreign lands. Many of them have got their heads blown off. Many of them got buried in foreign soil for one reason. To secure the blessings of liberty for America. Don't you suspect those guys were scared slim to death when they went off those landing craft? What made them go? They felt a calling higher than their life. They give their all, folks. They give their all. They paid the price of freedom with their life and their blood. This is the freedom that's being taken away, this is why I'm upset. They come out and took pictures of my place at night. Folks, that's got ever, ever resemblance of communism and Nazism. Understand what I'm saying here, this is a serious problem. This shouldn't be happening in America. It shouldn't be happening in America. If we're gonna do this, then let's disband the military, we don't need it. Let's quit sending our young people out to get their heads blown off, because that's a waste of life. That's what I'm upset about. We can work out the code, we can work out the problems, but we can't work out a young man's, gotta have brains blowed all over the sand piles at a foreign land. You can't work that out, it's too late for him. Now, some of y'all got military background. I was never in the military. That's a one mistake I wish that I made in my life that I wish I could correct. I wish I'd spent a little time in the military. They are fighting for our freedom. And these codes, the way they're written right now, are taking them away. And just a little while, I'm gonna give you some examples. Look at D. This is wrong, it should have never happened in America, not in America. That's why we call this organization Not in America. We believe that what we do on our property is our business. We believe that what we do on our property is our business as long as what we're doing is not hurting anyone. That's a different story when you go to hurting somebody. You should leave us alone. This is what freedom is. Freedom is being free from the government. That's what freedom is. If you're gonna be free, you have to be free from something. And freedom is freedom from government intrusion into your life. And again, I'm gonna tell you, you work for us. You're not supposed to let this happen. We put you up there to protect us from this. That's why you brought thirty-three thousand six hundred forty dollars a year. That's your job, to protect us, not attack us.
That's right.
And this is an attack. This is, this is an attack. You can't put this the other way. This is an attack. You have attacked us when everyone is struggling to keep bread on the table and the lights turned on. The economy being what it is, the fines y'all are lugging in on us, it's just, it's just, it's unbelievable. It's unheard of. Shouldn't be happening. People are struggling to keep the bills paid. This is kinda like being out in a boat, and the boat start taking on water, and still you throwing us a life preserver, you throw us the boat anchor. We're already sinking, and now you throw us the anchor and flip it on down. We're struggling to keep the utilities turned on. My wife's sitting here in these dental surgeons. We're trying to get it together now. Fourteen hundred dollars to pay the dental surgeon. The message you're sending us is, "You do not care about us." I've heard that so much, not gonna ignore it. That you people do not care. You do not care. That seems to be the common thread to it all. You don't care. Message you're sending us, "You do not care about us," are our problems. Folks, we all got problems. Everybody got problems. All you care about is raising money. We're paying. Now, you listen to me. I get a lot of information across my desk because of what I'm doing. Some of it is far out in left field. I could tell you some stories of what people told me I need to do, it's way off the wall. I mean, way off the wall. But I've got a lot of good stuff coming across. And here's some of it. Somebody done some figuring. Said, "We're paying sixty percent of our income right now for taxes." That's, that's federal, uh, income tax, that's land tax, that's sales tax, that's gas tax, and all the other taxes we pay, the bags, license plates, all those taxes. We're paying sixty percent of our income right now for taxes. People, we can't take anymore of this. You can't believe us anymore. We're bled down to where we barely can make it. You just can't keep believing us. We feel we ought to be, be free to do what we please on our land as long as we're not hurting anybody because we pay taxes on it to support the county budget. That's why we pay those land use taxes. Nobody in this building not listening to me objects to paying that. We realize that the taxes have to pay the police. Without the police, we got problems. We realize the taxes have to, have to maintain the county. We don't have a problem with that. Prepare our taxes to support the county budget. We ought to be able to do what we please on our land while we're not hurting anybody. If the tax money we pay you is not sufficient to run the county, then you ought to find a way to reduce the budget. Not get more from us. Now, you need to get to work on dropping the budget down. Not try and believe us more. And I'm not even gonna go there on the things that's been wasted. I don't need to tell you, you know. Look at verse four, uh, uh, John 11:4. "People are fed up with the government spending out of control. I talked to two or three thousand people over the last four months, and they are accepted to government from the White House to the courthouse. We feel our government has turned on us. We feel our government has betrayed us, got money hungry and wasteful with the money we're given it. This is money we've sweated for, and we've done without, pay our taxes." And again, we're not upset we pay taxes. We, we understand you have to pay taxes or maintain the government. What we're upset about is the way that government, from here to the White House, have wasted the money. Right now, you're taking the money we're paying you in taxes, and you're paying George and, and the county enforcement people to come around and harass us and give us more taxes, more, more, more problems. That's like taking the money and, and attacking us with our own money. Now, I have a copy of your, your financial statement. You got it right there. That's the statement you give to, to, to the, uh, man of senior law. To the, uh, voter, uh, voter guy, what's his name? Supervising election. I have that. That's public record. Anybody can get it. Just walk in there, that's across the door, you can get it. If I made the kind of money that you made, I wouldn't have any problem paying my bills. But I don't. Most of us don't. Most of us make about a third of what you make. About a third of what you make. It's hard to make ends meet, and you come along and file us for things that make no sense to anyone. This is wrong. Now, understand this. I don't have any problem with you making what you make. If life been good here, you can make that more power too. It hasn't been that way with me and most of these people here, and most people out in the Southern County. But the reason I put that in there is for this reason. Because you make the kind of money you make, you can afford to buy new vehicles and keep your house up a little better than what we can. I'm not opposed to that. Fine with me. I, I couldn't care less. I got my handful of what I got. But here's the point. If you got new vehicles, they don't break down, or supposedly. And if they do, you just call the, uh, car company out there. They're gonna have a wrecking pickup, take it in, fix it. They'll cost you nothing on the warranty. Fine, no problem. But when you're making a third of what you're making, when that vehicle goes down, you got a problem. You have to jack that vehicle up in your front yard. You have to take out the parts that's bad. And in most cases, you have to save for two or three months, maybe even a year, to buy the part and put the vehicle back on the road. When we do that, you come along, the county enforcement comes along, says you can't do this. That's why I brought that up. I've had two vehicles, most all mine. One of them I'm driving, one I'm fixing up. And you come along, tell me I've got a tagged entry for one that's not on highway. That don't make any sense to anybody. Point five. I understand you've been holding workshops about this. This is good. I told you that last time I was here. This is what needs to happen. We're gonna encourage you with that. We're gonna test you with that. We're gonna encourage. This, this is not a problem that we can't work out, buddy. We can work this out. We don't have a problem, can't be corrected. That's why we elected you, Buddy Judy. We accounted for about twenty-two hundred votes that y'all got. I don't know how many you got altogether. We could've counted about twenty-two hundred of them. We elected you, put you up there because y'all told us all along that you agree with most of what I'm saying. Elton, you told me you agree with most of what I'm saying. That's why we'll put you there. We're gonna encourage you. We're gonna support you. We're gonna get behind you. We're gonna do everything we can to help you. We don't have a problem here, can't be worked out. But we've gotta get it out in the week with different and, and, better than back and forth, and, and let's realize we've got a problem, let's get to work on it. Elton, I once told you four years ago, five years ago, when it was, that I was gonna get you some help up there. It was one man, just poor. We got it up there, Buddy Judy. We got it up there. Jerry, you, you and I understand something. I'm not against you. Not against you. If you want, I've voted for you a number of times, Jerry. But I'm mad at you. I'm mad at what's happened to you. Now, right now, you seem to be the one that you're having to deal with. And we can work this out. This ain't something we can't work out. But it ain't gonna go away. You three, Buddy Judy and Elton, have the opportunity to make a positive impact on this county. That's the majority of that board. That's the majority group. We're hoping Jerry and Ron comes along. We hope we all get together and work this out, make a difference. Use your backbone and press your foot on. Now, that's pretty much what I wanted to say. Now, I've got a solution. That's the only solution. I told you before, we can work this out. This ain't a problem. That's solutions to it. Number one, the way it stands right now, all we have to have for the county enforcement people to run out somebody's house is an anonymous phone call. Folks, that's wrong. That's wrong. If you're gonna complain about my house and my yard, you ought to be able, you ought to be amazed to look me in the face, buddy. Here's what's wrong with that. If this man here gets mad at me for any reason, if he gets mad at me, all he's got to do is pick up the phone call, phone, and call county enforcement and tell them I got something on my property that I shouldn't have, and they're gonna zero out there. They have to do that. That's their job. I know of one instance in this county where two women got upset over a, a recipe for a cake. That's kinda stupid, isn't it? They did it. And the one that lost the argument, went home and got stewing about it. Got mad about it, got stewing about it. Picked up the phone, called county enforcement, told them that the one that won the argument got a bunch of chickens on their yard. I couldn't tell you for sure, not, they got chickens. Find them, maybe get a little chicken. That's what's wrong with this. I know of one instance out past me up there where this lady rides up and down the road in a golf park, just looking in everybody else's property, writing down what she sees. Goes back to her house the next day, calls county enforcement. They're using this as a weapon against normal people because they don't have the backbone to stand up and look at them in the face.
There you go.
Now, fellas, this is wrong. This shouldn't be allowed. But I'm gonna suggest you say, you tell these people, "If you got a problem with your neighbor, you look at it. Y'all come here, you, you look at it. You look at it in the face." That'll stop a lot of this stuff right there.
That's right.
That'll stop it right there. That'll stop it. These people are cowards, and they will not face their neighbor.
Right on.
That's why they use a telephone. Point number two. When a problem arises, we ought to be able to work this out among ourselves. Anytime the government gets involved in something, they complicate it, mess it up. Neighbors ought to be able to work this out among neighbors. That would solve a lot of other problems. I have two of my neighbors standing here. Y'all stand up for me. You stand up. You two stand up. John, Larry, Milton, those are my neighbors. If anybody ought to be complaining about my place, it ought to be these folks. It ought to be them. They live straight across the road from me. Thank you, sir. They agree with me that what I do on my property is my business. I do not go over there, look in their yard, and see what's wrong over there, but call county enforcement. I live on a dead end street. There's not but four houses past me. Four houses on this planet that anybody has to look on my stuff. I physically docked on the doors and talked with these people. They all agree with me. Their names are on those petitions down there. They agree with me. Nobody has to look at my stuff. You've got to look harder through the, the opening in the trees to see it. Nobody's complaining. Nobody wants me to put it up like I'm not complaining about them or their, their stuff. We can work any problem that comes out among ourselves. Look at free. Now, you'll always have some who will abuse free. That's just a fact. I don't care how many county enforcement officers you put out there, there's gonna be some who would just abuse it. We all know that. That's human nature. Windows out. Those who are upset should have to put up a privacy fence because they're the ones that's upset, not the guy that owns the land. If you get upset with something I got on my property, you're gonna have to look at it. And if you don't wanna look at it, you put up a fence.
Right.
It's mine. What you would consider junk, I consider trash. If you don't like looking at mine, you're gonna have to look at it. And if you don't like it enough, you put up a privacy fence. You ought to have to pay it, my free. Now, if a problem arises, I have one in mind, this elderly lady, she fights the juice plant out there. Got a double wide mobile home set on big land. So important, probably put a lien on the place by now. Now, this is a legitimate problem. This is a legitimate problem. As grace, way over my head, I'm six foot tall. It jumped in the trailer, jumped in the yard. This is a legitimate problem. So, here's how you do it. If you come up here next Saturday or next Sunday, go over to the courthouse yard, you're gonna see a great big white box over there. It says, "Probation workforce." Don Hall started that when they got Judge at this county, and I think it's an excellent idea. When you go before Judge Hall for breaking the law, you're fined, and you give so many hours of community service. I think that's a good idea. We can take the people who have to work out community service, give them a machine, give them a sling, give them a lawnmower, give them whatever is necessary, get the owner's permission, go out there, clean the mess out, end the problem. Why is that so difficult? End the problem. You've got the workforce that won't cost you a dime. Won't cost a dime on a dime, and you can clean it up. You can do that all over the Southern County. If there ain't enough in the workforce program, Sheriff Will Wise has got a whole jailhouse full of inmates over there. Be glad to get out from there too. The point's this. The manual labor here is here. It won't cost us nothing. Matter of fact, I'd love, I'd love to see the prisoners out there cleaning the mess up if I might give them three square meals a day up there in another settlement, what's called a TV. We're getting something for our money. The workforce is there. The labor is there. All you've got to do is contact these people, "Hey, listen, we got a problem with the grass, we want your yard cleared. Can we send our crew, our cleaning up?" Most everybody will say, "Yes, go do it." Matter of fact, if you wanna do that and make, and get started on it, I've got about a four acre left in my land out there that I'm in trying to clean up, and I'd be glad if you'd come out there. I can't seem to find the time and energy to do it. Now, fellas, we can work this out. We can work it out. In my particular instance, right now, they're on build out travel trailers I've got out there. It's actually a parking lot. I set that up, but my daughter's staying. You know the story. You call me Senator, or you call me whatever you want to, but I was scared my daughter was going up to the apartment of town. And I want to remind you, just a couple of weeks ago, inmates got out of the county jail up here, went and tied a lady up, stole her car, they caught him down in Palm Court at McFar Road. That could've been my daughter. That could've been my daughter. Now, I'm guilty of breaking the law by putting that trailer out there. But I think there's something a little higher here than the law involved. When a man can't protect his family against evil people who prey on women who live on him, then they suck the bad out of white kids. I'm five and a half years old. Because of the ordinance that I can't have one house on it, I cannot help any one of my children. I can't let them have an acre of land out there for the house on it, but they ain't got a pay rent. I can't do that. And America, I can't help my children. You understand where I'm coming from? I can't help my children in America, a nation that boasts itself on freedom.
I realize it.
Look at four.
It's not free.
Permits. Folks, we are permitted on everything. We got, we gotta get permission. Permit is permission. We've gotta get permission to do just about anything we wanna do. This is wrong. This should've never done laws happen out there. You just can't just about go through the bathroom without getting permit for it. Permit means permission. That means I've got to ask the government permission to do what I wanna do on land I own. Am I the only one here that sees something wrong with that? It's mine. You didn't work for it and pay for it. I sweated and paid for it. I struggled for that. I ordered them to do what I want to do on my land as long as I'm not hurting anybody. It's mine. You didn't work for it and pay for it. I sweated and paid for it. I struggled for that. I ordered them to do what I want to do on my land as long as I'm not hurting anybody. Now, I'm not opposed to building codes. I'm not opposed to making sure that it works done right. I'm not, I'm not opposed to having a man come out and inspect anything I do to see that it's going to stand the hurricane. I'm not opposed to that. I'm not opposed to paying it. I'm not opposed to any of that. What I'm opposed to is having asked the government permission to do that. That's what the permit is. Where does that stop? Where does it stop? Permits have always been wrong. That's what got us in this mess to begin with. And closing. Anybody that's ever had to deal with it, with the, uh, building department through permits and such, understand what I'm about to say. The attitude of those people in those offices, and let me say this, it's improved a lot in the last few years since, uh, uh, what's his name, uh, yeah, Lester, one of them. It's improved a lot since he's got in there. But the attitude of them people is sarcasm, obnoxious. You go up and ask them a question, they will offer you no help whatsoever.
Right on.
None whatsoever. I'm going to give you two illustrations, folks. Number one, a fellow was building a little utility type thing, about a twenty by twenty. Something you can tinkle in. Code enforcement come out and stopped him in that permit. But when I've got a permit, inspector come out and said, you need to do this. He done that. Next inspector come out and said, oh, that's all right. You got to do this. He done that. Next inspector come out and said, oh, those two things are all right. You've got to do this. He done that. He spent eighteen thousand dollars, more than he should have had to spend to get this thing up to code so he can get final approval. When they called for a final inspection, the inspector come out and said, it looks real fine. Right at the code. Everything hunky-dory, but we've got one problem. You can't have that on your property. It's not going for it. Now, why didn't they tell him that before he spent eighteen thousand dollars? You see what I'm saying? And he said, well, I'll tear it down. I said, fine, before you do, you got to go get a demolition for it. That's what we're upset about, folks. Now, this is done. You don't need me to stand here and tell you this one. You don't need me. Before I quit, by the way, I've got the pocket of county budget. Probably not money, but it's all in there. But, uh, some of those numbers are astronomical. You, you generated a hundred sixty-five thousand dollars year before last on code enforcement fines. Last year it was a hundred thousand. This is pictures of my place. Buddy's been out there. Ms. Judy's been out there. I called John, uh, Stumpert, who was out there when, when he was running. He never showed up. That's why we didn't vote for him. Super whatever name he was writing. Tried to get ahold of you, Jerry. I wanted you to come out and look, and me and Mr. Lee's got in a, arguing over the telephone. This is, this is my place. This is the front of my place. Here's the picture. That is the front of my place. That's my driveway going into my house. Buddy, you've been here. Ms. Judy, you've come through. They could not have got these pictures unless they were physically on my place by about a hundred yards. They could not have took these pictures from the right away. The trees and brush and the water. They physically came on my property that's marked no trespassing and took pictures of my place. That's trespassing, folks. That's trespassing. This is my neighbor sitting right here. About a month ago, Mr. Hernandez come on her place, which is marked no trespassing. Went past her house, way back almost to the end of the drive. They went out, not knowing who it was. Hollered at him, got him stopped, and we didn't know what he was doing. Someone else? I thought you told me before. Okay, we'll get it straight. I'm sorry, boy. That's trespassing. That's trespassing. Now, you understand me. I do not want to get in a lawsuit, legal action with the county of DeSoto County. I do not want to do that. Ultimately, we all pay. That's a long gone affair. We can work this out as we ought to among ourselves. But this, ma'am, will you stand up? This is this lady. This lady's being fined a hundred dollars a day. Hundred dollars a day for thirty days for a semi truck that was parked on her property. But you've got a major problem with that. And these pictures are in this file. It shows the number on the trailer that's sitting there that code enforcement is fining her a hundred dollars a day for. She's got the log book of the driver that drove that truck, the toll receipts, the fuel receipts. That truck was in Rhode Island for twenty-seven days out of that month. They're telling her she's going to have to pay a hundred dollars a day for thirty days when the truck was in Rhode Island, New York, and all points east and west for twenty-seven of those days. She can prove it with the, with the DOT, log books, the toll receipts, and the fuel receipts. When she tried to tell the special master at the meeting about that, they said that we do not believe you. We're going to fine you for thirty days.
And you, sir, told me if I have a truck on my son move without, that I have to call to tell them, that I have to have permission to have a truck on my property to move myself or my son. This is what I was told. If I went to get appliances to my house and had a truck on my property, I have to call. I've never heard of such a thing. Do you have to call?
Uh, let, let me finish up now. Do you understand what this is? Do you understand what this is? This is a lawsuit waiting to happen. This is a lawsuit waiting to happen. Right now, right now, I'm dealing a man standing between this lady and a lawyer. I told you two or three weeks ago when I was here that I can be your best friend. This is not an isolated case. There's a lot of this. And right now, John, stand up. Where you at? John, stand up. They got him. This is John, which lady is that? Thank you. Sit down. We got him waiting. OAT, I don't know if you're familiar with that or not, but it's a trucker organization that fights stuff like this. They've been contacted. They're waiting out coming this meeting tonight before they make any decision, before they want to start legal action. Now, I'm not threatening you. I'm trying to tell you, we're trying to stop that. We can work this out, folks. We can work this out. We don't need lawyers. Here's what happened. If this goes into legal action, you're going to have Channel thirteen, Channel eleven, and Channel, how many, who knows, all over DeSoto County again. You remember back in nineteen eighty-four, we used to call a city without pity? When we tried to stop the rape of, according to our school, that age? We don't need the publicity, folks. Let's work this out and get it stopped before it gets that far. That's why I'm here tonight. Because we've got a problem. We can work it out amongst ourselves, and we can solve it. Now, Mr. News evidently is mad and walked out.
Mr. Braxton, I don't mean to
I'm done.
hold you up, but you got more than your thirty minutes.
I know. And I, and I'm going to stop it right here. I'm down to the end.
I'm just going to ask you to wrap it up.
I've got it right here. Hold on. Before I leave, and I'm done, basically, I'm going to ask you one question. I want a simple yes, a simple no. Simple yes or no? I don't want to know what you're going to do. I don't know when you're going to do it. But what I want to know, and what these people want to know, is this. Are we going to make some changes? Are these workshops going to work? Are we going to see if we can do something about this? And get DeSoto County back being free? We want to know, we want to get it on public record, who's for it and against it. That's the question. Yes or no, and I'm out of here. That's that's it. Jerry, because you've been on, on the board's longest, and you're now on the end of this table. Yes or no?
But Frank, I'm not going to give you a yes or no.
I'll take it as a no.
Okay, and you can say whatever you want to, but, but, but I, I represent an whole county full of people. And I can't just sit here and tell you because you've sat up here and talked to me an hour and five minutes, uh, and you've talked about, about everything except code, although you did hit on that stuff. Uh, it's just a little hard, and I think that we have it.
That's fine. All I'm going to
No, no, you've talked, I, I'm, you've called on me, I'm talking.
Go ahead.
Uh, you, I think you think that we're going to just kind of do away with it, and a lot going to be a part of doing away with code. Uh, there's, there's laws on the books, and they have to be, uh, upheld, and, and I'm going to support that as long as, as long as I'm the commissioner.
Very good. That's all I'm asking now. I don't hold, I, I don't agree with you, but I'm not mad. Mad won't stand what he, what he believes is not worth shooting. Now, I know we've got to do this through. So that's, that's one. How about you, buddy? Yes or no? Not what you're going to do, or not when you're going to do it.
I'm going to, I got to say my piece, and then I'll give you the yes or no.
Very good. That's what we're here for.
There's, there's things in our codes that can and need to be changed. Um, I don't believe that we're going to do away with code enforcement one hundred percent and run everybody off. Um, because I do know there are citizens out here that also would like a little bit of, of, of control. Um, we all know that there's a handful of people that's going to do as they please, no matter what the rule says, what the law says. Um, we do have to have a little bit of order. If not, it's, it's chaos. You've got people giving whatever they want to buy your house. You've got people doing whatever you want to buy your house. What you may say hurts you, that may your neighbor next door say, no, it ain't hurting him. It ain't physically done nothing, you know? Um, he may have a thousand barking dogs next to your house that keeps you awake all night, and there's nobody to do nothing about it other than you. And then you and him going to get tied up, and the next thing you know, you'll be over at the jailhouse, and you'll be cleaning that yard up over there because you went over and handled it yourself. So I don't think that we can just throw these rules and regulations away, but I do believe that there's room for us to work on these. We have been working on these in the workshops. We're asked to public. I know Mr. Provo, I'm looking out, I've seen him, Mr. Bob Moses left. Um, I'm looking at several people that show up at these meetings that give us ideas, that give us suggestions. We work with code enforcement because, as you said, George has a job to do. Whatever's wrote on this piece of paper, he has to enforce. That's his job.
I know.
But there's things in there, there's things in there that Georgia tell you that can be changed to make things work better for people. We've been working on this truck issue. We had a meeting in here for an hour one night, um, or maybe a little bit over an hour, about trucks, about people that make a living with a truck, and, uh, whether they can park them there on their property or not. We're trying to help the people of DeSoto County be able to park their semi or their dump truck on their property. So we are working on this. I guess the answer to your question would be yes. I am willing to work on this and change. We have been working on this and changing, and that's why I've talked to you in the past and told you that, that the group not in America could probably better serve DeSoto County by coming in and giving us suggestions and ideas. Because these people that's sitting out here, I see several people I know that doesn't have problems with code enforcement, that has to make investments outside of what they'd like to make to keep their business up and going. Um, and just like the lady sitting back there that they, you know, claimed the truck sat there for thirty days. I don't know if it did, I don't know if it didn't. I'm not going to get into that. But we, as a board, have been working on this stuff. It's not falling on the deaf ear. Uh, now, are we going to make everybody happy? I can honestly stand here and tell you, no. I can guarantee you, I ain't going to make everybody happy, nor is any other sitting up there. But the answer to your question is yes. We are working. And are going to continue to work and do the best we can. Because for every reaction, there's always an action, or every action, there's a reaction. I hear them say that. So if we change it today, it may be wrong tomorrow. But it's just a continual process that you've got to continue working with. And these rules have been on the book since eighty-two or whenever. We've just never had a code enforcement department as efficient as what we have now that's going out and enforcing. That's where the problem has rose and, and, and it's, it's, it's become more, more evident to the public that we have a code enforcement now because we actually have people that are doing their job. So, yes, sir.
That, that's all I'm asking. I'm not, what you're going to do, or when you're going to do it. We're just going to find out who's going, if it's going to happen, if we're going to continue with it. See, I'm about two months later. This was supposed to happen in January, and back then, you wasn't doing these butts as we, we are now.
Right.
And I'm, I'm running a little high on them, but I want to get it on the record, who's for it and who's against it. That's all I'm asking. Come on. Buddy, yes or no?
Well, I'm going to be like Commissioner Langford. I'm going to answer your question when I get done speaking. Because I have some things in this paper that, that you mentioned that, that didn't sit real well with me. And you told us what didn't sit real with you, so
Very good.
I'm going to get my five minutes. Well, over on, on the first page, when you were talking about Mr. Hernandez and his wife, just because they live in DeSoto County, the last time I checked, we lived in America.
You live in what?
We live in America. I, I, I spent twenty-two years in it. For Uncle Sam, I draw retirement. Nothing says he can't live in Hardy County and work in DeSoto County. Where he resides has no bearing on the code enforcement. Okay? So where, where Mr. Hernandez lives doesn't matter. When we get over here to the, uh, as far as agreeing with you, and as far as using the, uh, the people, you were talking about Judge Hall on the weekend, guys, there's certain equipment that those folks, they don't let them use. And, uh, machetes and some of them are, and chainsaws are some of that equipment. Now, there is certain ones that they're allowed to use push mowers. But some of that's not allowed. And as far as, I'm not real sure on what you consider bothering people. Uh, as long as you're not bothering anybody. There again, getting back to what Commissioner Langford said, it could be between you and your neighbor. He may have thirty-five head of barking dogs. That's going to be between you and him. Uh, I don't think there's been any code enforcement laws have been changed or touched since ninety-two. Is that right?
Ninety-two.
Uh, I don't know what we talked about, Roger. Was it ninety-two that hadn't been, nothing absolutely hasn't, hadn't been done since ninety-two, somewhere around there?
That's correct. I believe it was ninety-two, ninety-three, something, something like that.
And I talked to you about this. This was one of the things that, that I wanted to address for DeSoto County. Because we need to make them fit. We're going to try our best, and that's why we're trying to get the input from the citizens of DeSoto County to make sure that when we're done, that we have a set of codes that everybody can live with. It's like Commissioner Langford said, are we going to make everybody happy? No. But if we can make the majority of them happy, then that's our goal. But to answer your question, yes. I, 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 I want to see that happen. But on the same token, I would like to see what you're doing, uh, your efforts to come to the meetings and constructively try to make these better. Thank you.
Well, like I said last time I was here, I understood it was code law. I didn't know it was code law. I understand that now, and I'll be, I'll be, that ain't a problem. That ain't a problem. I might have known that before then. And two yeses, and that's what we're asking. We're not asking you what you're going to do. We're not asking when you're going to do it. We're just, we want to find out who's for it and who's against it. Ms. Judy, it's your turn.
Okay, I've been out to your house a couple of times and saw exactly what, you know, what you're, we're discussing. Um, some of the things that I see right now, as far as this all goes, is these people that's here are supposedly concerned about these laws and these codes that's enforced. Yes, they need to be tweaked. Some of them do. But you need to have inputs at the right point. Arguing is not going to make it.
I know.
It's, that's not the way to go. Um, back with the deal with George with living out of county, we have people from here that works in other counties too.
And you go there?
Yes, you sure do. Yes, sir, you sure do. And as long as they provide their own way to go, I don't have a problem with it. It's where you can get a job nowadays especially. So I, I didn't understand that. There was a part in here, another part where There was a part in here, another part where you said that the message that we were sending that we don't care about your problems, that's not true. We got elected to this board by you people. If we didn't care, I'd have never ran. I'll be honest with you. And then it said, and in, in here, it said that you would like to help us to change? I would like to see y'all at these meetings that we have to try to help to do this in an orderly fashion. Not arguing and carrying on because that's, like I said, that's not gonna work. It, it doesn't happen. But, um, it's, it's old rules, old laws that, that has been doing it, and like they've said, George is doing his job. But, yes, we do need to work together to try to, to get other viewpoints other than just strictly ours. Same.
Is that a yes?
That's a yes.
Very good. That's all I'm asking. Uh, we're not, what you're gonna do tonight, what, what you're gonna do, when you're gonna do it. We just want to know we're on the right track. And, and like I said, I'm about two months behind on it. I plan on getting there for a minute.
Mr. Braxton, uh, I'm gonna let Commissioner Hill wants to speak again, so I'm gonna give him the opportunity.
Very good.
Speak again, Professor Hill, Commissioner.
Mr. Rayburn, I, I just had some thoughts that I, I want to share with you. I, I think you probably know this, I just don't know that you really, uh, uh, think about it as, as maybe you should. Uh, I've heard you on several occasions mention that people died for our freedom. We've talked about our freedom, and people died for our land, for our freedom, and I believe that, and I'm very respectful of that, and I'm very patriotic, and I appreciate people being there. But, but I'd like to remind you that, that everybody didn't die over there. You know, there was people in the wars, I know some, uh, that was in probably the Second World War. I know people was in the Korean War, and I know people was in Vietnam. Uh, and some of those folks, that they, they served us to, to, to defend our freedom, but they came back home, and they saw fit to serve their country in another way, and they got elected to, to county offices and state offices. And they helped make these laws that we live by today. So, the people that died for our freedom also lived and came home and set up the guidelines for us to have freedom, to take care of our properties, and to, to do whatever, to be able to live in a free land. You worship where you please, you know, you can, you could go to town to town, you know, you, you can cross states like that. That's freedom, you know? It ain't just our land that we live in and how we, how we live on that land. Freedom encompasses quite a bit. And, and I just want to remind you that it all died, some of those people. I know some of the people, I can name names, it'd take me a few minutes, that sent right up here and helped set the code that you have, that you're talking about, uh, that's being wrong here today. So, so put that in your, in your train of thought, that yes, but these people thought enough that they served our country in the, in the military. They also come back and they serve their country, and saw fit, helps set guidelines for us to live by.
I'm not opposed to guidelines. I mean, we, we understand that laws have to be good, but I'm opposed to is when they start taking proof.
Well, I think I just talked about freedom covered more than just what you're saying.
Well, if I can't protect my daughter, and I can't put my children on my land, then I'm not proof.
Right on.
Thank you very much, Alvin, for letting me talk. It's been a long time getting here. The twenty-six hundred petitions, if you want them, I'll leave them. If not, I'm gonna take them back.
Do we need them? Mr. Carter, is there anything yet?
It's gotten more evidential now.
Just hold on to them, Mr. Rayburn, as I, and, you know, um, just hold on to them. For, in case you need them in the future, hold on to them. Because they really won't, they really won't do us any good because there's no, what you said.
Substantial.
Yeah, there's, we're not deciding anything, and, and other than the signatures, not substantial competent evidence to put towards anything other than signatures. I'm not saying they're worthless, they just not gonna do us any good at this point.
I hope so, just as well as that many people do.
Yep.
Now, I'm, I'm gonna get involved with it, and I won't help you.
Yes, sir.
We're gonna help. We're on the right track. I'm too much behind here, speaking this speech. I'm too much behind. But we're gonna help. We're gonna straighten it out. We can do this.
Yep.
But I still think it's wrong for anybody to take a salary, and so can me and these people here that, that live. I'm done. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Again, thank you.
Mr. Bob? Please tell me you don't need thirty minutes. Name and address for the record, sir.
Uh, Bob Bell, I live at twenty-four fifty-three Southwest Charlotte Street, DeSoto County, in, uh, Arcadia. Uh, anyway, gentlemen, I can't see what's wrong with what you're doing. When we can go upstairs and go up into the cardhouse and see plots from the United States County Association on our work programs, and they're cleaning up our debris, and cleaning up the county, I can't see why anybody can criticize the county for what you've all done. Thank you.
There's no further business. Jason, do you have any thing you'd like to add, I said?
Well, I've got thirty seconds.
Yeah, don't give him time. You work for me, so keep it quick.
Got thirty-five seconds. Now.
This is gonna be fun to follow. Um, and Mr. Braxton, the truck parking thing that we've been working on for several, uh, months, and so I'm glad he's here to take that. So, I'm hoping that, as I ask of every citizen and every commissioner to provide, uh, comments, uh, we can provide anybody else that wants a copy of that, maybe not today, there's a lot of people here, but tomorrow, any other day during the week. Uh, I ask, um, I'm trying to think how to say this. In my position, I'm very, I guess we have to be detail oriented. We write codes, they have to be very specific. Uh, it's hard to talk about, it's one thing to talk about general policy as we are today. It's, the difficult part is writing it in the text to implement what we're talking about. Uh, we've talked a lot about policy. Uh, I think there's a lot of, um, there's both sides, especially the truck parking thing has been an issue. I think the board is, is, each member is, uh, struggling with which direction to go on that. Uh, sometimes it's okay to say, "Well, let's just pick a direction and go, and if it doesn't work, then we'll fix it." Uh, my point is, is that I hope that we are at the point with some of these rules and regulations that we need specifics about language, staff, I'm talking about staff here. We need specific feedback. Uh, it does me no good anymore to sit and talk about, "We need to do something about truck parking." I get it, I know it. I don't know which direction the public wants to go. I think I do, I hear both sides. I need this, this is a proposal from us. I need the public to comment on this. Um, and, and that's the difficult part that we get from, we don't get that feedback. So, um, not just tonight, I hope that you continue to encourage your constituents to do that. Contact me. We don't get a lot of phone calls of people coming in wanting to sit down about this stuff. Uh, I think it's the dirty work that, uh, is, is the tough part, and so people don't have a lot of time in their day to sit down and talk about it. But, I've told you many times, I'll make myself available at any hour that the public wants to talk about it. We did that with the Com Plan, I'm more than happy to do that with this. Um, I don't know how much you want to go into it. I've got copies of the A-ten and A-five districts. We can talk about use. I don't think we want to do that. Zoning is zoning. It, it's here. I, I don't think it's gonna go away. We can talk about which uses belong in which zoning districts. Um, I guess technically you can make it go away. I, as a professional that does this for a living, I don't recommend that you do that. Uh, just because I'm, I'm concerned about what could happen. So.
And, and I wanted to, I wanted just, uh, because I've got what you, the, the truck parking stuff here.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to let Mr. Braxton, if you, if you'll look, everything on there that's stricken out, that has a line through it on that, that is what it used to be, and all the underlying stuff is the proposed changes that we've made. I don't think this is in stone yet. We haven't-
The way I've done it, this is no different than the December meeting.
Right. Well, this is some, this is some stuff that we've worked on in the past, at one of the past meetings, trying to, uh, trying to make it easier for folks that work, that drive a truck for a living. And Jason, yeah.
Well, I know I'm too much behind. I know you're all in there, but this is what-
That's, that's fine, that's fine. I just, I just wanted you to understand what the, what's stricken out and underlying.
Mr. Johnson, ask Jason a question.
Yes.
Yes.
I, I probably only have about four more copies, but I will definitely make them, they're, I may, we may put them on the website. Um, just can make it easier for some people instead of having to come in. Uh, we've got copies available up front, at our front desk. Uh, I just want to clarify, the LDRs that you have right now is nineteen ninety-three is the official adoption date. There was an LDR, uh, I'm sorry, zoning code nineteen eighty-two, nineteen eighty-one, nineteen eighty-two that was adopted. There's been zoning regulations since nineteen seventy-three. Um, so it goes back a while. I'm just gonna count it. There's many places zoning goes back to the nineteen hundreds and even before that. So, here in DeSoto County, it's essentially been the same rules. There's been some tweaking since nineteen eighty-two that is correct, but there's not a lot that's been a problem. I think you hit it on the head when you said, one, the enforcement, we've never made anybody provide by our own rules. And, and two, there's, um, in DeSoto County, there's a large amount of settlement in rural areas. And so, I think there's a perception at times that, and, and staff has probably done this over the last decade, "Oh, go on the rural area, we won't bother you, you can do whatever you want." Uh, obviously, that's not necessarily the case, um, and then that's just further, uh, that becomes further an issue when you get more and more people living out there. Um, and I just want to bring that up because I wanted to mention about the density thing. I know one of Mr. Braxton's issues, um, or Mr. Rayburn's issues was the, uh, second home. Uh, we're, we're never gonna be able to allow second homes, especially in rural areas, uh, full-time. We do allow part-time, like, um, uh, cottages or model law suites, that sort of thing. Uh, but there's a density issue. Many of you went through the Com Plan issue with DCA. They're very adamant about density. We have to allocate our projected code where our residential units are gonna be, and to allow homes to further subdivide, uh, then that creates urban settlement patterns, that creates a demand for more services. There's a lot of other things that go with it that I don't, we can't get into tonight, but I just want to keep that in everybody's mind, that paved roads, uh, utilities, power, water, sewer, all that stuff, school bus, trash pickup, goes with dense development. So, keep that in mind as you talk about the difference between rural and, and urban developments. I know it's a little bit beyond what we're talking about, but.
Mr. Mansfield, do you have a question?
Well, I, I do. Mr. Green?
Yes, sir.
You were talking about you could be available, whether it be by phone, or somebody could come to see you up here.
Absolutely.
If somebody wanted to, to, to respond to, to anything that, that we're doing in these workshops, is there any way that we could set up a, a, a page or something on our website that they could access? I know that, that some other counties have done it, uh, and taken people's ideas as far as, uh, uh, different issues in their counties.
Absolutely. Yes, I, I think, uh, well, one, our, our email addresses, staff single addresses are available on our website, but I think that's a good idea to follow up on, is as each of these issues come through, um, and, and I try to, I want to try to treat them individually. Sometimes they affect each other, but for the most part, truck parking is truck parking, density is a density issue. Um, then we can set up a link on our webpage in the proposed language as we go through for each one, uh, and then have a email or some kind of general form that'll come into one of our email boxes that'll have, as long as the subject line's consistent, "Truck parking, here's what I think about that."
Sure, and that's what I'm getting at, I mean, it-
But I, I have to implore people, you have to give specifics. If, you know, and it's the nitpicky thing, and maybe it's just what I do for a living, but-
It's, it's what you do.
But we have to have that. To tell me this isn't that great, and that you don't really like where it goes, that doesn't give me a lot of advice. And I'll do whatever, you know, we'll write whatever the public wants, you know? Obviously, as long as we come to a consensus.
Right.
Uh, but we can't come up with new ideas and create new language without those specifics. We have to do that.
Mr. Polis is gonna get well entered on that.
Yes.
Get with you and try to get that done as soon as possible.
Right, and, and again, just dropping something off, a handwritten note, I mean, with, any form is fine. We can, we can look, I can read that, and that's not a problem. We'll keep that for the file. But, uh, communication is, is very important.
Commissioner, is there any other comment? Mr. Bob?
I'll try not to aggravate you too long. But anyway, in the trucking, I was in the trucking all my life. And there's a place to go for, residential is no place. And the company I was with, if you got caught in the wrong place, and you weren't supposed to be there, you were looking for another job. Like, I showed you a picture of that culvert I took. I seen that semi run right smack over it, and it was parked in the residential area. And when you go to setting up these programs, make sure it's a feasible places, because that culvert cost us taxpayers money. And me just went out and laughed about it. And it's wrong. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. You need to come to the podium and state your name and address for record, please. Name and address for record, please.
This is John Burnson of the twenty-six eighty-three Southwest Lewis Avenue, parking reported. I've been there for over fifteen years. I got a question for you on this truck issue. Okay? Anywhere that you put a house is considered- What? You can't poke a truck in a urban development. Okay? What's it take to bring you this stuff to that development? You can't bring it on a tow truck. That's still a truck. It takes that truck to bring what these people live in.
Right.
Okay, without the man, say, being able to take care of his car, phone, personal figure, or a semi. Okay, if I park it somewhere else, it costs me thirteen hundred dollars a day, I'm just paying for it.
We understand where you're coming from. That's why we're working on rewriting these rules as a-
It's not every truck driver out there runs over a car.
I understand that. But you see, you see the problem that we get into.
Right.
When we get to writing this, because for every action, there's always a reaction. So, that's why we're trying to, we're trying to, and, uh-
What's the difference between my truck and a bus? A bus weighs more than a truck, and it's longer than my truck. But they still allow that in my area?
Right. I understand these things.
RVs.
And we are, we're working on it.
RVs.
Wanted to bring that to you, Jim.
Okay. Thank you, thank you for your time, sir. Yes, ma'am. Mr. Rayburn? Yes, ma'am.
Kathy Rayburn, um, Joe Rowe. I'm not as long-winded as he is, uh, but I do have a, a question. Um, at my church, we have a bus, and we ride all over town. I know this is county, but this bothers me a lot. We ride all over town, and we pick up kids for Sunday school, okay? The city is a mess, okay? And it just seems like it's all centered on county. I mean, the county is wanting to force all of these code enforcements on us, and we've got five acres of land. We don't have an animal, one, but a cat, you know? You can drive any place in the city, and you've got chickens and hogs, and you name it, okay? So, I think my opinion is, you guys ought to get together, the city and the county, and start working in the city, and then work your way out if you want to beautify DeSoto County.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Chairman, one of these coming forward about, just in response to Mrs. Rayburn, is the city is an entity, and it's on, and it's on, they, they do set their own rules and regulations, and they're on control there. I, I just want to make sure that I'm being clear.
Name and address for it.
Gary Reese, uh, seventy-four Colorado Avenue, Arcadia. Only had a couple of things to add. Very interesting, first time I ever sat in on a full session of government. Kind of feels pretty nice. I respectfully say, more goes on than I thought. However, being a drafted, honorably discharged veteran, I didn't serve for no one's freedom. I served and swore to uphold the Constitution. That's the problem I have, not anything else. They have a constitution, and I'm a lawyer, don't want to be, don't like them. However, if you took the time to look up Hale versus Hinkle, nineteen hundred and eight, you'll find exactly the topic that it's talking about. It'll shock you. It'll shock you, scare you. It worked. It worked three thousand years. Hale versus Hinkle. A person has a right on his own property to do what he wishes, as long as it does not affect his neighbor. The man quoted it, he just didn't tell you who did. It was Hale versus Hinkle, Supreme Court ruling, Second Amendment to the Constitution. Look it up. I swear to God, it's there. Hasn't changed. Thank you.
Supreme Court ruling, the rule of the Second Amendment, challenging to-
There's no further business to come before this board tonight. We will adjourn and thank everyone for coming tonight.
What's it called? What's it called? Hale versus Hinkle. Hell, that one's-
H-A-I-L?
I think it's H-A-I-L.
Yeah, because we're developing a website based on the DeSoto County website, or the DeSoto County?
Okay, uh, let me give you my number in case, in case, because I got it there. It was challenged eight or ten times. It has to do with- It was challenged eight or ten times, it has to do with freedom of speech, it also has freedom of assembly. You have a right to petition your government.
Right.
Hale versus Henkel, nineteen hundred and eight, H-N-K-E, H-A-L-E is right, H-E-N-K-E, H-E-N-K-E-L maybe?
Okay, that's fine.
But it's there. If not, it's four nine four, five two eight, two days, four nine four, three five eight It's there.
Very good, okay, yeah, I'll find it.
And it's blatant, every time it goes that far, the people win. It's just, that's the US, every time, it's been there several times.
Obama's gonna take that for me, and he'll take that away from me. What's in all stuff? Get the boxes, huh? Oh, yeah. I guess that's it. Yeah.